Commissioner, whoops, Brett Lowery. Latest in the pledge, and Commissioner Hoffman to say good morning.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask, Lord God, you would direct us, you'd guide us, you'd be a part of this meeting, Lord God, that we ask that everything we do, the decisions we make, will be pleasing in your son's name. Christ name, we ask your favor.
Amen.
All right, we're going to get started. Called this meeting of the City Commission, on board. First thing on the agenda is three minutes from our regular meeting from 7 to 19, on pages one through four of your agenda. You've all had a chance to review it, I'll entertain a motion. Is that moving? All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Hoffman.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Lowery. Any of opposition? Motion passes four zero. Moving on, the building update, that is, the next page in your packet. Any questions or comments about that?
It's good.
Okay. Moving on, PSCRA at this point, no update. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be at noon, the first Tuesday of the next month, in this building. On to you, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Issue number one, for this commissioner's boat slip rental agreement, last meeting, I was instructed to go back and add in a price per square foot, which was $12 per foot, or not square foot, but linear foot, and to adjust the pollution liability insurance limits to $2 million. Both have been done, and this agreement is now before the commission for consideration and acceptance.
Any discussion amongst the board?
I think we discussed last meeting, I think we're good. I am in business.
Any comments from the public on the boat slip agreements? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to accept that rental agreement.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Lowery, that's second. Second from, sorry, Commissioner. Any opposition?
I'm going to oppose based on the fact that I opposed the first time they took voting on it.
No one opposition? Passes.
We speak up, we give you a message.
We have one opposition from Commissioner Hoffman. Motion passes three to one.
Next, Mayor Protem, we have ordinance 558, medical marijuana. It is before you today for a second reading and consideration of adoption. I would need a motion for the second reading.
Okay, well, except the motions on that, so move. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any opposition? Okay, motion passes four zero, go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
The city of Port St. Joe, state of Florida, ordinance number 558, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, establishing the prohibition of medical marijuana, cannabis, low THC, cannabis and derivative products, treatment center dispensing facilities within the boundaries of the city of Port St. Joe is authorized by section 381.986, Florida statutes, providing for legislative findings, providing for moratorium contingency, providing for penalties, providing for repealer, severability, and modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearings, providing for codification and effective date.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, any opposition? Motion passes four zero.
Next, before the commission, is ordinance, proposed ordinance 559, related to R2A under the land development regulations. We need a motion for a first reading and request advertised.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Not a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any opposition? Okay, motion passes four zero. Did you also need a, does that include the request advertised, correct?
Correct.
Moving on then, to old business, Jim.
One, one second, I still need to read the ordinance, and we may want to have a public comment time on that, even though, even though one way or the other today won't pass.
Sure.
Ordinance number 559, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, amending the city of Port St. Joe land development regulations, providing for additional land uses under article three, section 3.04, district R-2A, in specifically defined areas, providing for appeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with, providing for severability, providing for pluggability, and providing for an effective date.
Any discussion amongst the board? Any discussion from the public? All right, seeing none.
Mayor Protem, I do have a letter from Ray and many likely, that they request to be read at today's meeting, with your permission. We, Ray and many likely, are submitting this letter to request that the current section 3.21 subsection three of the land development regulations be adhered to, and that permanent mobile homes or trailers only be allowed in currently approved areas of the city of Port St. Joe. Being that we are homeowners located, parentheses, 40 years, within the immediate area affected, we would like, we would not like to see the resale value of our property go down because structures are being placed in the areas for which they are not zoned. Also, we ask that the board would consider, would be considered of the fact that if this request is granted, it will affect the entire landscape of the city of Port St. Joe and its property owners. End of letter.
Okay, did I request that each commissioner take a look at that parcel and see, make an opinion on whether we move forward with the second reading at the next meeting? Do we have anything further, Mr. Attorney?
Nothing from me.
Okay, moving on to old business.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protem, Commissioner. First item we have is the FEMA damage assessment report. We have been working with FEMA, they have finalized this report. The initial report had 102 properties that were affected, the new report gave 20 additional. There will be roughly 122 letters that will be mailed out this week to property owners that have substantial damage to their properties. Within that letter outline the requirements that will be needed for them to contact the building department to make approvals to their property. The next item we have is the DR 420. The DR 420 is the proposed millage that we need to turn back into the property appraiser site. We have 30 days to do that, we received it on July 1st, so at this point in time, it would be appropriate to make a recommendation for the proposed millage to move forward with our budget process. Your current millage is 3.5914. In the past, we have turned it back in at one mill higher for preparatory work, working through the budget in case we do find a ticket out of that substantial cost that we need to approve and increase the millage. But you also have to consider, this year, we've received $88,000 from Triumph. That money, to my understanding is, was to fill that gap for the shortfall in our landlord taxes this year. So if you decide at this point that you want to go up on millage, there's a good chance that you're going to have to return that $88,000 back to Triumph. So it's up for the board for discussion, but we do need some recommendations what we want to return our millage app for proposal for the DR 420.
Okay, discussion from the board.
Based on the budget that we just started working on, why that, that budget is holding the line on the millage rate, correct?
That's correct. It represents no change in the millage, in the current budget.
I'm comfortable with making a motion that for the upcoming year's budget, we hold the millage rate at the existing current rate.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, second for discussion, either of the four.
Mike, what about the increases that we don't know about, we aren't, we're unsure of, such as health insurance?
Yeah, that's probably the biggest unknown, is the health insurance and liability insurance, and we won't know that until we get further down in the process. Certainly, you would estimate that 50% of those increases would impact the general fund, but we really, we can say historically Dwight has been very good at holding the line on our increases for health and liability insurance.
Yeah, but our liability shouldn't increase, we're locked down for two years, correct?
I think that just finished. We're up for renewal for another two-year period. So that's potentially some change there, but we don't have any guidance from Dwight yet as to any indication of the potential growth or rate increase for either of those two items, as we sit here with the current draft budget.
Do we have any idea on the timing on that?
Generally, those come in late August. A lot of times, they're one of the latter parts, unfortunately, we get, we know it's a big mover every year, but unfortunately, it's later in the bus, like before we get the numbers back from our insurance carriers.
I'd say, how comfortable are you guys, holding the millage rate?
That is the two, that is the two items that are still outstanding on there. Based on the money from the Triumph that you know you would have to return anyways if you went up on the, on the millage, staff recommendation will try to hold the line this year, I believe. I think it is appropriate to do, considering what we've all been through, our community this, this past year, I think that's probably the appropriate thing to do.
Yeah, it sounds to me, Jim, like if we would have to go up a quarter mill just to make up that $88,000, so we wouldn't really see an increase in our budget until we over, we went over that, so we'd be throwing away $88,000.
No, see, a mill represents about $285,000. So let's say that you decided to go up a mill, right off the bat, you probably would have to give up $88,000, so you go up a mill to get, call it $198,000 instead of your full mill, so it's probably not a good year to go up on millages unless you absolutely know that we've got a shortfall somewhere.
The way I look at it is, we already go up on water, we are going up on trash pickup, and we've already been through a hurricane, the last thing we need to do is put more cost on the citizens of St. Joe. And on top of that, we'd have to return $88,000, so that's why I feel comfortable in making the motion.
Commissioner Langston, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, the way I see it, you know, we, we have a nearly balanced budget as it stands, so pending any changes in insurance, which, who knows, could go up or down, we've got an additional officer in that budget, which is something that I've wanted for years. I'm, I'm very happy with where we're at, and I think holding firm with that one mill is, is a good idea.
I agree, there's some, certain, there's some other items in there that we, we could rely on, in the event the insurance and such might go up 15% or whatever.
You're absolutely correct, yes, it goes up, in order to put something in, we've got to take something out, so you are correct.
Well, we can augment with other pots too, just keep that in mind, rather than looking to burden on the citizens, there are pots of money that we could dip into. All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any opposition? Motion passes four zero.
The next item we have is MLK corridor zoning change, that will be up at the first meeting in August. You'll see the advertising, one in the newspaper, August the 6th will be up for your consideration of adoption. On the new business, the first item we have is Creekside Platte approval. This is the portion of Windmark Beach, that if you ride into Windmark now, you'll see where the development has started, the land clearing and preparation to move forward. I think you have representatives here from the St. Joe company today, if you have any questions, but they are looking for a platte approval so they can actually sell the lots off.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Would you consider this phase two of the Windmark development, Jim?
According to discussions we've had with the Joe company, this would actually be, if you call it phase one of the newer phase, of portion that's within the city of Port St. Joe. There's some reference that you'll hear of phase one and phase two, phase one being the old section that's in the county. But if you look at the actual DRI, all indications are that phase one would be on the water side, when you get to the west side of Highway 98, that would be referred to as phase two within the DRI.
I want to direct you to the ordinance number 380. I believe it was written in, was it 2006, is that correct?
I believe it's 2007.
Okay, I can't hardly read it, 2007. And I'm hoping you're familiar with this ordinance and our local agreement. What happened was, the city of St. Joe, the county of Gulf County, went into an understanding, an agreement, an ordinance, a deal, whatever you want to call it, and the Windmark company, the St. Joe Corporation was good enough and had made a commitment to the city of Port St. Joe to say that when they reached a certain stage in the development of Windmark, they would give the city of Port St. Joe $200,000 for fire apparatus, I believe is the terminology that they use. And this was, it says, "on or about June the 1st, 2007, the developer will provide to the city for fire apparatus to be stationed in the fire district which serves the project." Well, we all know what happened, 2007, 2008, when the, when the real estate crashed. Well, somehow or another, this came to my understanding that the city of Port St. Joe was never given the $200,000. So, an email was sent quite a while back, but the email was from Jim asking the St. Joe Corporation, you know, can we get our money? And the response from the St. Joe Corporation initially through email was, "we made that payment, we paid you." And that's important to remember, that part of this conversation. It wasn't, "we don't owe you the money," it's, "we show that we cut a check to you." So we followed up, the city did, not me, this was before my time, and they supplied copy of the, of the actual check and the payment. Well, the payment went to the county, the county of Gulf County. And I don't know if there was another deal with the county, I'm not sure of that. What I am sure of is, the city never received payment. So then Jim followed up again, based on my direction, to inquire again, "where's our money?" And we were told, "we don't really owe you the money." So remember what I said, remember that part was, they cut a check and didn't argue they didn't owe us, and now I'm being told, "well, maybe they don't owe it because it was just an ordinance and not a legal binding contract." So my question to the St. Joe, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with any of this, if you're not, I understand totally, but if you are, and you can speak on this, because this is going to have a huge impact on approving a platte, because in my business world, you pay your bills and then you move forward. If you don't pay your bills, you stop until you pay your bills. And I'm going to ask, when we discuss this platte approval, that we table the platte approval until we have had proper time to sit down with the St. Joe Corporation and ask our attorney to look into the bill that I feel needs to be paid to the city. Because $200,000 is a lot of money to the budget of Port St. Joe. We're talking about a deficit in tax revenue, property appraisal fees coming in, we need to be paid before we continue to partner with the development of Windmark. That's where I'm at today.
Commissioner Hoffman, have you had a chance to speak to council, to that effect yet?
I believe council was involved in it earlier, I hadn't spoke to him today, because I, I was just leaving this to council to work it out until I saw the request for the platte approval. And I think we need to hold the line on collecting what to do to the city before we approve the next step, because if we don't do that, we're going to be so far down the road, it's going to be more complicated to get paid. And, and it may turn out that they feel like they don't pay, don't, don't owe us the money, and they're not going to pay, and we can go down that road, but we as the commissioners should safeguard the money that's actually owned by the citizens of the city, and I think it's our job to do our due diligence in collecting what, what I feel like is owed to the city prior to approving more development.
And I would agree with that, Commissioner, that we need to research whether that $200,000 needs to come to us. I'm not comfortable, Mr. Attorney, I'm not going to put you on the spot without having fully researched this, but I do think that we need time, however. I don't think that one is tied to the other. I think that if we start having a habit of prohibiting or making it difficult for development in this community in a time of need where we need housing, that, I think that's, that's doing our citizens a disservice. We can work proactively on getting that $200,000 at the same time of approving this project, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, bottom line, if they owe us the money, they owe us the money, we can figure that out. They've got a, a large amount of interest, including the Marina, and I hate to hold up, it appears to be 20 something lots here, that we desperately need housing on right now, based on this.
So we're in a race to build up the $88,000 deficit next year.
So I, I mean, I'm, I'm on both, to approve the platte, but if they owe us the money, they owe us the money, I mean, that, bottom line.
Yeah, and I agree, one doesn't have to be directly tied to the other, but you know, I'm going to, I'm going to play the game to where I can win the game. And if I can use this platte as a way to get paid, I'm going to vote that we table this, and I'll make that motion now, that we table the platte approval until we figure out, is the city of Port St. Joe owed $200,000 based on the emails and the ordinance that I have in front of us, and, and we'll, we'll just go from there.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, is there a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board?
Yeah, I just want to say that it's important that we move forward and get some homes, build some houses, build apartments, whatever, so it can, somehow people can come back, somehow people can come back in town, maybe create some jobs, but I definitely think we need to move forward with this, it makes no sense to table it right now, if they owe us the $200,000, they owe us $200,000. I agree with some of the things that Commissioner Hoffman says, but in the end, the bottom line for me is, is making sure that we have, build some homes for some people to come back in town, or somewhere, but somebody can go, that's how I feel about the situation.
Yeah, I kind of feel like we're dragging the Joe company into the middle of a, of a civil war between us and the county. And this, I think it's going to come down to, does the county owe us that money? It's obvious that they paid somebody, and it's really between us and the county who that money belongs to.
Or it may be both.
It could be.
It may be 200 each or something like that.
Mr. Attorney, you have a lot of work to do.
But it's just, it's been so long ago, but I, I don't disagree with you.
The bottom line is, we'll find out eventually, if they owe us the money, they owe us the money, we'll find out how we can get it if they owe it to us, but I think it's better for us to go ahead and move forward, it's, it's today, instead of kicking a can down the road.
And I agree, I guess we, I'm just glad to hear everybody say and agree with me, they owe us the money. At least we're going to figure it out, because we're talking about things that happened in 2005, 2006, so let's figure out if they owe us the money. If I can't get you on board to stop there, or put this on hold, maybe I can get you to at least consider, at the next step in this game, the next time we approve something, that we commit ourselves to make sure we've been paid, or we have a clear understanding that we're not owed the money.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And I feel like we're a proactive board, we're going to make sure, you know, I can't speak to a board student in the past, but I don't think we're going to let anybody get away with it, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with staff researching that.
I'll entertain a motion, either way.
I'll just withdraw my motion this time, based on what I just explained.
Motion failed due to lack of a second, I'll entertain any other.
Want to make a motion?
I'm good, I'm, I'm fine where we are, just so everyone understands that we are going to find out if we are owed $200,000, and you're going to hear me at the next time that we, we move forward with this development, bring it up and ask that it be stopped until we're paid, if we are in fact owed the money.
Well, I'm for staff working on trying to figure that out.
Yeah, so the new business at hand today is Creekside Platte approval.
I'll make a motion for platte approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. On that same note, before we go on, Commissioner, did you want to make a motion to direct staff, or does direct staff have to research that?
I think they're clear on what, what they need to be doing, yeah.
All right, moving on then, Jim.
Yes, sir. Next item is commission chamber, PA system, we heard earlier, we had a little bit of issue with the PA system. I have talked with our IT representative, we can get some lapels if everybody wants to, if they're able to wear them, we can get some, they're about $600 or $700, should help with our sound quality, so if everybody's good with wanting lapels, we can get some ordered up, that's the way to do it.
Well, Jim, I have no room for my agenda packet with the microphone this close, so I'd rather wear a lapel so I can have some space.
You're all good, we'll, we'll get with it.
What do you all think, would you all be willing to do that? We could have all of our staff miked as well.
$100 for everything, or?
Yeah, so we got to fix this problem.
Oh, you're really replacing the lapels, that way you've got a mic that's actually closer to you.
Can we figure that in with the air conditioning situation?
Absolutely, agree.
Let's, let's move on that as well.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Government complex grant. Directly after the storm, we did apply for several different items from legislative appropriation. One item that we did get approval for is $312,500 to look into building a new government complex. $312,000 is not going to build you a new complex, but this money is going to be flowing through the Department of Economic Opportunity, that could be seed money to help you locate the property, engineering work, architectural work, those type of things that might get shovel ready. So at this point, what we need is to get approval from the board to sign off on the grant, send it back to DEO, and then what we need to do is, we need to get approval to start looking at property or sites and get everybody's input, start our home workshop and stuff, what you want to do moving forward. But it's seed money that is coming down from DEO. Hopefully, what this would do is to enable us to be able to apply for large chunks of money through the disaster relief grants coming through DEO as well. But like I said, this would just start the process, and it's the wish of the board to look at trying to build our new fire department, police department, government complex that will be suited to housing, emergency personnel during storm situations, and to hold for day-to-day government activities.
Any discussion?
I think I'm, I'm good, I mean, the, the building flooded, and we need to start looking for angling.
I think our building was built in 1938, 49, so it may be time to start considering this, if you could find a grant where the taxpayers here in Port St. Joe directly would have approved the bill for.
Yeah, I think we have an opportunity here to make the change now. We've got to be high and dry in another storm event, we can't be operating out of, out of someone else's house, we all couldn't meet, we met a parking lot after the storm. It would be sure nice to have a high and dry property to run the city out of.
So if it's wish the board, if we could get a motion to approve the grant and direct staff to start bringing properties back to you, we'd start moving.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the $312,000, if they'll give me one.
Yeah, motion to accept the grant.
Okay, I have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any opposition? Motion passes four zero. Public works.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First item on our agenda is relative to the Field of Dreams. And this particular item is there for, for the reasons of the yard debris that we have on that facility. As the board's familiar, we've been staging yard debris on that lot for the last four years. We have about 20,000 cubic yards debris on there. Mr. Anderson and myself have been in discussions with a gentleman on Overstreet, that is the owner of Kaiser Kane Storm. Those discussions initially were for him to give us a price to, to grind that debris up and remove it from the site. Those figures came in around $80,000 to do that work. Since those initial discussions took place, a need has arisen on his behalf to potentially use that site as a DDMS for the buffer preserve, to remove the storm debris. So what the board has in front of it for its consideration is a proposal, proposal is written by KK Storm stating that, or requesting a lease till the end of December on the Field of Dreams property as a DDMS, and in return, Mr. Anderson and I negotiated with him that he will be required to remove all of yard debris at the end of that lease, at no cost to the city. So if the board wishes to consider that, that's what's on the table there for attorney all written, if approved, you know, to write that agreement and get it to Kaiser Kane for approval from all parties.
So we'd be saving the city $88,000 to get rid of the debris?
Mostly $88,000, correct, yes, sir.
Well, I think that, that property needs to be debris free. I think we need to get that stuff off.
And we agree, and in particular, because with, with the contract changes to BCC, you know, technically, we'll be out of the yard debris business. to BCC, you know, technically we'll be out of the yard debris business come October first, so it's a great opportunity to have that property completely cleaned up by the end of December.
And that, that's the date that he's agreed to, end of December?
Yes, sir, he's requesting the end, through the end of December.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Is he gonna take, um, all of the debris that, that fell during the storm that, I mean, just, not just the debris that's, was there or has been put there recently, is he gonna take the, the trees out or down due to the storm and so?
As far as on the site?
Yeah.
Uh, there hasn't been a scotch, actually, it was just the debris.
Which he's gonna need, he's gonna need room, so I imagine so.
Yes, sir, that's correct. He'll have to clear out the area.
Did you need a motion for that, Jim?
We did. Uh, Commissioner, one thing I would suggest is to allow the city attorney to draft this up. We need to probably get approval from the St. Joe Company too, because there is a reverter clause on the property. We need to amend your D E P permit, and what I would suggest is to, uh, have them bring you back in agreement that, uh, make sure the site will be cleaned up and removed within six, uh, six months or December, with make sure all the crap is done.
Okay. Still waiting on a motion.
So move staff recommendation to what attorney?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, is any opposed? Motion passes four zero.
The second item, sir, on the agenda is the, uh, approval from the board to purchase a vehicle and a piece of equipment that was currently budgeted this year, all state contract.
Any other chance to look at? I'll entertain a motion for the purchase.
So.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any opposition? Motion passes four zero, go buy your truck.
Yes, sir. Uh, the last item I have is Patent Park Sewer. Just prior to Hurricane Michael, we had began discussions, uh, of this area where the old hospital site was. It was the board's intention or wishes at that time to provide gravity sewer for the subdivision. Uh, Hurricane Michael hit, everything sort of got lost in transition. Currently, there's one home being constructed there through wind-off construction. Uh, they're going to need sewer. I think you have a proposal from Dewberry for the engineering services to remedy for that. And, uh, if it's the board's desire to approve that pass order as well as give us permission to go out and advertise for, uh, the materials needed for that project.
Is that in this year's budget?
It would be covered in this year's budget, yes, sir.
Again, it looks housing growth.
And that's supplying gravity fed sewer.
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, that, I remember I made that motion, like, felt I'd do a spare to do, even all the other homes around that area have gravity fed, so, uh, yeah, I, uh, do we need a motion to, do, I'll make a motion that you, uh, you do what we need to do to put in and get bids for gravity fed sewer.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any opposition? Motion passes four zero. So you got?
That's all I have, sir.
All right, surface water.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. Uh, the mayor wanted us to, uh, put together the dispects for the top three chemicals we have at the plant. I did do that, I submitted to City Hall, and, uh, I guess we just need permission to go out to bid for those chemicals.
Okay, yeah, that was a request to just see what's available. So we're looking for a motion about shop for chemical costs.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any opposition? Motion passes four zero. All right, wastewater.
The only change we've had at the wastewater plant since last week is we, you know, got some rain, so we lost a couple inches of pond. Uh, we should have that back by the end of this week. We'll take a full pump next Monday, and we got a bearing going out of one of our pumps that, uh, for the spray business. So we're, uh, glad to pull that pump next week and try to get back in as soon as we can, so that's kinda where we are. Any questions?
Moving on, finance, Mike.
Okay, you all should have received your first draft of, of the budget. Uh, our first meeting is scheduled for, for first Tuesday in August. I don't know that we set the time on that, on that meeting. But certainly review your budgets and, and, uh, and let me know if you see any, many issues or have any questions.
And Mike, I, I'm extremely comfortable, I know how many of you have gone through. You've essentially balanced the budget minus about eleven thousand dollars. I don't think there's any need to meet until after we get those insurance figures, do you? Let's see what the final numbers come back as.
We'll certainly continue on staff level to review and make sure we aren't missing anything and continue to, to be open to any suggestions or ideas that come to us, but certainly I don't know until we have more information, uh, if it's really required for us to meet. This, we consider this your time to go through the budget, so you tell us whether you want one meeting, ten meetings, you tell us.
The public hearings would have to start in September.
Those you'll have to have, because that's when you actually adopt your ordinance on there for your mileage and for your budget. But the, all the preliminary, that's entirely up to the board, you tell us. We certainly could work in a brief update on the budget in each regularly scheduled meeting in August and, and then go from there.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I've looked over the budget as well, and, um, until we get those numbers, I mean, that's, that's no different.
Decisions to make until then?
Uh, but, uh, um, I understand what you're saying, but I still wanna, I wanna at least have a meeting.
Absolutely.
I mean, I wanna discuss it, sit down and look at it, and if we have any discussion then, let's go ahead and, and take care of it then, but, uh, we don't have to have five or ten meetings, let's just have a few meetings, sit down and talk and discuss this, this puzzle.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable starting meetings in August.
It don't make sense, just, okay.
Juan, you think you might have an update, first meeting in August?
Well, we'll touch base with Dwight and see if we can get some movement on that, but I'm not really clear as, as a man, he might be able to get us anything on that. But we'll follow up with Dwight and see if we can push him on and get a target date for, for that data, for that information.
I'm fine with an update of the first meeting in August and then, if we need to meet the following week, we can start from there.
That's fine with staff.
Yeah, I, I think we're ahead of where we were last year. And last year, uh, was the first time I went through a budget, but based on what a little bit of I know about it, it seems like we're further up ahead. So by the time, um, the first meeting in August comes around, I'll have plenty of time to read through the budget myself, and I'll continue to vote you about every third day anyway, so.
Staff's fine with that.
All right, anything else for Mike? Okay, moving on to city engineer.
The only item I have is just talk about road bond, if y'all wanna do that today, you know, talking about guard rail last time, I think, uh, maybe, you know, there's money there to pay some streets if you wanna pay some streets. Uh, it's not something you gotta decide today necessarily, but we would make a decision just so we can close that project out, as y'all are reconvening there.
Clay, I know I talked to you yesterday briefly about some of those circles.
Yeah, um, I did, looked at, um, we're trying to brainstorm roads that don't have sewer under them, you know, those paved roads don't have sewer under them, so, uh, since sewers all need repair. So, um, the circles, I think most of it is outside of the pavement, the circles being Westcott, Bellamy, and Hunter. Westcott, I think, has been resurfaced more recently than, um, Hunter and Bellamy look like to me. And so, um, I did, I, you know, you've got money to do one of those circles between Hunter and Bellamy certainly, um, and maybe another road, you know, I think another maybe Mimosa, the sewer's outside the road. So, yeah, there's probably four or five you could pick from, um, just depends on if you're appetited for it when you're ready to move forward.
Let's look at, go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Let's just, let's look at those, um, and everybody get over right by and check them out, if you got any other ideas. I'd, I'd like to put pavement on the ground, because we don't ever get, you don't often get money to do it. And if the sewer's outside of it, um, that's, that's more.
What, what about speed bumps?
I, the county's asked, the county's checking to do it. I asked them, is that, can it be funded, their finance, just let me know. And, and I should, I mean, it may even be later this week, I know that, so why don't, why don't we come back to the next meeting, I'll have just a list with some prices like I've given you before, this road's this much, this road's this much, and y'all can decide then.
Well, Jim, would it, would it be possible to have Bree put in on our Facebook site that we're looking at paving a couple roads? We have it in the, uh, we have the money already secured instead of the four or five of us picking roads. Um, I think the people that should pick the roads are the ones that live on the roads, and, and let, let people have comments. They can send an email to City Hall and let Bree look it over, and then we can break out the ones that qualify based on where the sewer line is. Uh, I, I don't even know that information. Uh, I know that, I live on Marvin, and there's lots of Marvin that need asphalt, but I'm not gonna be here as a commissioner and say, hey, let's pave Marvin. I don't think that's fair if we all lived on roads that had the nicest pavement on them, so I think let's put it on our Facebook site and find out where the people that live in St. Joe feel like, uh, that you're gonna get a lot of them to say, Long Avenue, Long Avenue. And we have to explain to them, well, we, we can't do Long Avenue based on where the sewer line is, uh, because I, I don't know if these roads are eligible and non-eligible. Maybe she could, uh, break that down and as a list of eligible roads and have people comment on it.
Well, one of the things I wanted to bring up too, I had a discussion with Clay, and I think that this was a unique opportunity for us, uh, and this isn't, this may or may not be able to happen, but, uh, Clifford Sims Park has no shoulder. The road is pretty much destroyed, it's the only waterfront road that the city owns, and it's in bad shape. Clay made a good point that that could be part of a larger grant, but that's something to think about too, that we could pave that and fix that up to where there's actually a shoulder.
Yeah, and then everybody benefits from a road that we all utilize, so.
So that was a thought, but then he did say in big picture, you know, there's probably grants for parks, NERTA grants, uh, other grants that are available for that, but it may take a lot more time. We can do this tomorrow, so, just something to think about.
Um, look, Clay, on the road, um, um, that's, at, at the industrial road, um, where the trucks are going in to, um, dump sewage, we need to look at that too, it's terrible, it's been like that for, for years and years. Could, could some of that money be used for that?
Yes, uh, is it in the, I don't know if that road's in the city, I'm gonna have to check. It's right on the borderline between the county and the city, but, yes, road bond money can be used on that road.
Checking that, and don't forget, I need, I really, um, I'm focused on those, those speed bumps.
Soon as I find out, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay. Industrial roads are coming up to be paved.
It's under contract, and, uh, yes, the contractor, uh, I don't have a notice of or a mobilization date from them yet, but yes, through the county, um, that road is gonna be resurfaced, paved shoulders added to it, um, starting the next thirty days, I'm guessing thirty, forty-five days.
So if they get that, they probably can get the road, what I'm talking about there.
They're gonna go right by? Yes, sir, they're gonna go right by.
Save the mobilization fee. All right, any more questions?
Thank you.
Up next is your code enforcement update on page fifty-six, everybody peruse at your leisure, and we have the police department update. Chief?
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything on the agenda, if anyone has questions of me.
Uh, just a comment, yesterday I got several texts from people that said there was cars parked on the beach, actual cars in front of the Maddox house, just have you guys check on that. I know you were busy yesterday, but that's all I have. All right, thank you, chief. City clerk, Ms. Charlotte.
Yes, sir, I do not have anything.
All right. Now to citizens to be heard, anybody like to speak today? One of us, right? Sign in, please.
I did.
Ball.
Um, just make reference to our last meeting, um, some of the items that I told you that I would get in reference to rezoning of Martin Luther King Boulevard and the entire neighborhood, and then rezoning of Martin Luther King Boulevard, and the entire neighborhood that was, uh, listed on, uh, with the roads that the PAC group had submitted in. I did get in contact with more people, uh, we have a half-paced, um, petition, and I got several more petitions we got coming, she has that, several petitions for the community. The residents stated very clearly they do not want to change their residential property to commercial property. They stated that, most of them said they never received the letter, some did not know about the letter, some attended the meeting, and they made it clear to the PAC group that they did not want to change their residential property, uh, to commercial property, and that's the main point. And at this time, I let the residents come forward and speak their own opinion, because you said, uh, it was stated that some of the residents wasn't here, and we need to have them to come to the city commission meeting, so we want to hear from the residents. So far, we have not heard from them, so I won't take up none of your time and let the residents come forward.
Yes, ma'am, this will be on the agenda at the next meeting as well.
Yes.
Any other citizens to be heard? Yes, sir. Just get you to sign in, please.
Yes, I'm, uh, my name is Dr. Harris, and I stay on two oh two Avenue G, right there off of Martin Luther King. I don't understand why do y'all want us to change our residential property to a commercial property? It's, we having, we having hard enough time now paying our taxes. Now, y'all gonna raise our taxes up. Ain't no use you talking about, y'all ain't gonna raise, change it to a commercial. Everybody know when you got commercial property, you got higher rate. So y'all talking about coming over to changing our property, why? We wanna know why. We want our property to stay exactly where it is. We ain't got, right now, the storm have been through there. We ain't had nobody come over there and try to help us fix our houses up. How in the world do y'all want us to turn our property into, from residence to commercial, and we can't afford to fix our houses? Y'all, I don't understand this. I don't understand why they study talking about coming to take our property. We, we, man, we, we work too hard, some of our parents died, left us this property. We ain't got the money to take care of all this, what y'all talking about doing? Y'all wanna give us some money to do it? No. And nobody in here gonna give nobody, no money, talking about small business, you can't get a small business, 'cause we done went through that. Everything you come up with, we done went through it, and we haven't gotten nothing from FEMA, we haven't gotten nothing from nobody. I'm saying I don't want my residential property turned to commercial. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mike. And I would like to just clarify, Mr. Attorney told me to shut up if I'm out of line. Changing the zoning, if it is even, if you are in that part of it that is changing the zone type, we don't tax based on zoning. Your house is not gonna be forced to change into anything, it can remain exactly the same. Your mileage only goes up when your property values go up, it doesn't matter what the zone is. Just wanna make sure that that's clear, am I wrong? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Sir, will, will you come back up, like, there's other people, Ms. McRoy?
Christie McRoy, Woodward Avenue. I'm thrilled about the deeded property, you know, that is to be set aside for, uh, Field of Dreams, uh, sports complex or educational purposes. And, and I do believe that, you know, we're in a, in a strife situation right now, we're trying to get all this debris, you know, grinded up and move on with life. So I hope, since St. Joe is here, I hope they will hear our plea that we're not trying to, uh, you know, change or shift anything, we just need help right now to get this done. And, you know, my hope is that what will happen, um, and I've been talking to a lot of people, uh, that understand what the realities are. And the realities are, if you build a sports complex, you need fifty to a hundred parking spots per regular, regulation field. That's, that's what is, is stated when they talk about building sports complexes. So we've got a great opportunity, and I think people are more and more getting on board with trying to build a sports complex out at the Field of Dreams. Now, I know that there's some entities, and you don't have to go very far, talk to very many people, to know that there are entities within this county that would like to have that property. That property was deeded to the city, and it belongs to the taxpayers, because it's deeded to the city. So that's one item, and then I'll just, uh, touch quickly, Jim was kind enough to put together all the information concerning the NERTA grant. I think that's another great opportunity. It's a great opportunity to restore our wetland, it's a great opportunity to control flooding, it's a great opportunity to filter our water and make sure that it's safe drinkable water as well, as well as water that runs into the bay. If you look at this packet and you look at the map, it If you look at this packet and you look at the map, it looks like a small spot for that grant, and where it's supposed to be, and then you have all this other area, and the way that I, when I've been talking to DDP and Northwest Florida Water Management, it almost looks like, you know, a spit into the ocean. I've asked for open and transparent meetings concerning this NERTA grant that people can come and be involved in. It's nine hundred thousand dollars, and it's nine hundred thousand dollars, again, to improve our water quality for the bay, and for drinking, and for the sea turtles, which we see now on every corner. So, um, I'm going to, this little packet that I got from the city cost me fifty-six dollars to get this done, okay? And I was happy to pay it, and I'm not gonna charge y'all a dime for giving you a copy of it, but you need to look at these emails. And we need to also understand what is the contracting process for this NERTA grant, because from my understanding, there will be certain things that will be discussed between the city and Northwest Florida Water Management and DDP. And I would like to make sure that it doesn't matter if it goes to Dewberry, or if it comes to the city. Dewberry, if they are doing work for the city, they are under the Sunshine Law. And so, there's some holes in this document that I'm going to be going back and asking for more information. And again, this is for the city and the taxpayers, so I just wanna come to the podium and make sure that we're clear. Thank you, gentlemen.
Chris, you sign in?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Uh, Mr. Branch?
I only have, I only have four, I just know how many to make, but, I'll get you off the table.
Good to ask, sir.
I've got one more, who didn't? Robert Branch, uh, I was here, I've been here several occasions, kind of talking about what, uh, my biggest concern has been since I started this podium a year and a half ago. Actually, uh, where I'm at on Marvin Avenue has always been floodwater, stormwater. And that, uh, y'all got a copy of these pictures, and I'm gonna go through it the best I can, and at any time y'all wanna stop me, uh, feel free to. Page one. Okay, I like to talk about ongoing storm issues. The first picture is the portion of our stormwater canal between Tenth and Sixteenth Street. Looking at this canal, it is open and clean, protecting us from flooding, along with our valuable wetlands. Page two. I'm talking, all these pages are the same form, I'm not deviating, it's the same canal from one end of St. Joe to halfway to the other. Number two, this portion of the same canal is at Highway seventy-one looking north. Okay, this definitely needs a lot of attention. It is not protecting us as the way it was once designed. This is not, this is not good for our flood protection. Like I say, anytime y'all wanna stop me, and, uh, we'll speak about it.
Well, Mr. Branch, I'll just make one comment, if you allow me, that NERTA grant that Ms. McRoy was just speaking about?
Okay.
Is part of a master stormwater drainage plan, uh, part of that grant is to do a study, to try to fix the flooding is a, is a big picture. We keep putting Band-Aids on spots just by emptying out the canals of debris, but in order to figure it out, we need a master plan to work with, and we're not gonna have all the money up front to correct every problem, but we are diligently trying to fix this flooding.
So, what you're saying, the NERTA grant is a master plan for St. Joe from one end of the city limits to the other?
Yeah.
Pretty much, all, from all the stormwater, not just this, but you actually have two bodies, you have this and actually, uh, I think the other's called George Washington, maybe if I'm correct or wrong, that slang name, I mean, one takes care of half of the side of St. Joe, the other takes care of the other. And actually, I'm, uh, sometimes I'll ride my bike, and I'll, you know, if you look at about every street end, from west on the east side going, you've got pipes dipping into this. Okay, so what, what these are doing, this canal doing, is keeping St. Joe from flooding, it always has, as long as it's maintained. As lo, as long as we agree on that, okay, can I move on, or we don't talk about this?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Okay, let's go to, uh, so Plan Two is, I don't, this, this might not even be y'all's land, or, 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 or just belong to St. Joe, it's belonged to, uh, the city of St. Joe.
I'm not sure which picture you're referencing, sir.
Okay, let's go to, let's go to the third one. The third one is, once again, the same portion, but it's looking back to the south, back toward Eighth Street. It's not as bad, but it also needs attention. We're talking the same canal. Now, all these pictures were took yesterday. Okay, now, let's back up to Hurricane Michael. Okay, this is a backyard, this is the same canal we're talking about behind, a backyard near Turn, Thirteenth Street. Notice the water level equal to our stormwater canal, the same water. This is where the water come up from our hurricane. Or it equalized, water equalized, it don't run uphill, it runs, if you've got somewhere to go, it runs in, unless you've got a pump to pump it out, you will never run more uphill. Okay, what I'm getting at, this is actually, the water had probably receded three foot. This don't do justice of what Hurricane Michael done. Okay, let's, let's move on around to, uh, the next one would be, this is the same backyard, and notice it's not a houseboat, even though it looks like it. Okay, the same backyard, notice the level is equal, you can see more of the stormwater canal, looks like a river, looks like the big river back there, it's, it's still equalized. Okay, y'all, y'all agree with that so far, or am I, I'll stop any time, like I say, and, uh, and, and let y'all talk.
Mr. Branch, I think what you're telling us is that we have major issues with our drainage, and you gotta understand too, we had a five-hundred-year storm event, that hopefully will never happen again.
Uh, uh.
But we're trying to prepare for it.
Mr. Ashbrook, I appreciate you saying five-hundred years, and I've heard that many times, but, but let's all remember, we were lucky last weekend. Okay, we were lucky last weekend, Louisiana Tech wouldn't have been lucky, they still got flooded with the same hurricane, the only reason, the same property, we didn't get it because it moved back. Okay, but I'm, I was, I'm, I'm here to talk about that, that's past history. So, let's go to the last one, and I'll leave the podium. This is the same stormwater canal, this is the day after, the same day of the hurricane, several hours after, this is the same canal now we're talking about. Okay, now, if you back up, look at this picture, and back up to number one, okay, that's the same canal, right? Okay, what would happen, all this water under this kayak, if this canal wasn't there, where would it be at? It'd be in people's houses. That, that is the only canal that saved a lot of people from flooding in that area. Uh, I feel concerned, I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience? Come on up, ma'am.
Good afternoon, my name is Jack Warren Leslie. I was born and brought up in Port St. Joe. I always had an intention of returning to spend my retirement, not in my father's home, but in my own home. When I saw the condition of the home after being vacant for three years, we decided that I would invest in the property, as due respect to my parents, who provided that home for us. It wasn't for a commercial reason, it was to raise his family, and that's what he did. And that, after fifty-three years, is what I came back, to restore the home, the home where we shared love. And I definitely oppose turning my family home, making it a commercial zone, and that's just how much that house means to me. After fifty-three years, back restoring, due to the respect that we owe our parents, and I hope that we don't have to fight to protect something and keep something that has meant so much to us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we get you to sign in before you leave the podium, just to have you for the record? Anybody else wish to speak from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to you, Commissioner Langston. Oh, you got one? Come on up, Mr. Peterson.
Gentlemen, the, the only reason that I'm here is because when I hear the vision of the community, um, I think you should know what the feel of the people. Um, this PAC group, I don't respect them at all, because of some of the things they did, and the way they did it, went about some things, and, and I talked to those property owners, just to find out, were they contacted by, uh, any of the PAC members? No, 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 no. And they, so they say they'll sign a petition. So, I said, okay, we gotta group of people out that may sign a petition and say, they don't want no changes. That young man that spoke on the podium, he's been living on Main Street for a long time, and he was one of the ones that I talked to, um, and he, just like he said, he don't want any changes. I don't want any, a lot of people don't. Ma'am, the taxes will increase eventually, you, we, do you agree with that?
As property value increases, your taxes increase.
Okay, okay, that's the point, that he was given that, that he couldn't quite get over Tuser, that was his point, that his taxes was gonna be increasing, he don't need that, nobody over there need that. That storm has got us, where it's gonna take five to ten years for us to get over it. So, the petition that was taken, y'all need to just consider the names, consider, consider the people that, that went out there, we signed it, and there's the people that came just, just in support of leaving it just like it is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience?
Can we tell?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I have twenty-seven signed petitions of people that the letter went out to, and they are in support of what is going on. These are the people that own property on Martin Luther King, right? These are people, twenty-seven of them, signed, and I'm giving you copies of these, that are in support of the rezoning. There is a change that's coming, it may not be today, and it may not be tomorrow, but St. Joe is changing, whether we do it now, and we be done now or later, so, who do I give the signed copy to? Oh, all right, so, here you go, twenty-seven signed copies, and we not with.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Tann Smiley, I'm a property owner in the local county, uh, City of St. Joe, uh, me and my family, we have property right down from where they're talking about doing the call up front. Uh, the people who are against it, first of all, I don't have nothing against nobody, so I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I don't like somebody, 'cause we see things differently. Okay? Change is coming. I just heard you guys, and y'all looking for a place to put City Hall. Now, I've been living in St. Joe all my life, and I know we don't have no property in the south direction to put City Hall. We know that. Do you guys agree with me? Any property in the south direction that puts City Hall, not unless you're gonna take it out by the hospital or somewhere. So, it's got to come towards us. No, change is coming, and I just hope everybody get on board, and we come to one accord, and do what's best for the community. I go to the meetings, and I wish a lot of the people would come to the meetings. Some, some part of a PAC group, I ain't part of no group. I see what they talking about, I express my feelings, but to stand in this podium and tell you that I have something against those people, that's a personal problem. If we not here to look at personal problems, we here for what's good for our city. I mean, we talking about our taxes on the land, the garbage rates just went up, and I don't hear nobody saying nothing about that. I mean, Commissioner Dashbrook, that's what we got to do for what's best for our city. And once we get off of that tip, I don't like you, I don't like you, hey, man, just 'cause we don't see things, like, not only we got to hate each other. Change is coming. I look around, uh, St. Joe, the City of St. Joe, everything is making a change in the City of St. Joe, except the north community. And it's just a matter of time. So, I hope the people get on board, so we can have a decision on what's going on in our community, instead of having someone come in and tell us what we have to do. That's it.
Mr. Smiley, can we get you to sign in for the record, please?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Mr. Davis?
Chester Davis, my name, and I'm also president, pastor, and I'm president of the PAC, the one that someone said they don't respect. When we started the PAC out, we asked the community to get involved and inform, uh, each other about what we need to do about our community. And out of that formation came what we consider what the PAC is. It started out as a committee, but then it turned into a coalition or something, because it engaged other things in the city other than just redevelopment, health, and all the other issues that deal with our community. Old Stalwell, sitting at one of the meetings, made a statement that we need to rezonate our community, in order that we can attract business and residential. When we start talking about rezoning, we're never talking about removing, displacing, or increasing tax to anyone. Simply, we're saying we want to bring better traction to our neighborhood, uh, so we want to increase the density until, in order to get it done. We had public meetings, uh, July sixteenth, uh, two thousand eighteen, we had the second one in August twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, uh, October sixth, two thousand eighteen. At each one of those meetings, we had an average of forty people that showed up, and there was agreement. there was an agreement with the redevelopment and the rezoning of Port St. Joe. The rezoning is a mix. It's mixed for resident and for commercial. It is the customer's choice or the citizen's choice as to what they want. No one's trying to make them buy out or sell out or, you know, change what they want in their own community. But the idea is that we come up with a business format that'll help everybody, not only north of St. Joe, but it'll increase Port St. Joe in general. So what we've been trying to do is not to tear it down and not cause a division in our community, but that we come together. It's not a one-man show. It's not just about two, three people trying to do this. It's about a community that needs to be assisted, it needs to also be able to come back and grow and look back at where it came from. We have a beautiful history over there, and that history need to be restored. And the only way we can restore it is try to bring some things or items or entities back to that north Port St. Joe that will allow us to thrive again. My memory of Port St. Joe is very good, happy memory for the things that we used to do. So what better way than we come together as a committee and a coalition and as a city in order to improve North Port St. Joe? And by improving that, it don't mean that we're just taking over some elderly houses and forcing people out and calling taxes a big, but we have to improve that city. Somebody said change. Change is coming. Yes, it is. But who's going to make the change? We or somebody else? So I'm asking the city that when we look at our votes on August the 6th, that we continue with the rezoning because it's not to hurt anybody, it's to help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Ms. Amy, you've already been up. Just please make it brief.
Yes, sir. Very, very brief because this is all on you. We want you all to work with us residents in supporting the life history of North Port St. Joe. So therefore, on requesting, on July the 22nd, which is next Monday at six o'clock, we're requesting the city commissioners hear from the residents, and it would be at your own house, right here. We hope and hope that you all are available because time is of the essence to get the word out to all the North Port St. Joe residents where we're standing on rezoning. Let them hear from you.
What time does that begin?
Six o'clock. Next Monday, July the 22nd.
Okay. Thank you.
When would you get back? So you all count to ten, city commissioners.
Is that already been?
What are you trying, you just going to have a meeting or you want?
Yes, we want to meet here, get the approval, you being present to hear from the residents of North Port St. Joe.
Ms. Amy, I'd ask you to work that out with staff, but it will have to be noticed if you're inviting us all to participate.
Yes, that's what I'm here before staff now.
Okay. You have to meet with, you'll have to meet with staff to, it sounds like you're asking, you're not telling.
No, no. Invitation to city commissioners to meet with the residents. And I want it to be so convenient that we could make a decision because we're asking to be here and at your, at the commissioners, the community, at this building next Monday, six o'clock.
Invitation received. Make sure you get the staff to make sure that this building is available.
Is it available? Is it on?
Have you already reserved it, Amy?
No, no. I'm asking now because it was the city commissioners' building.
We don't have the calendar here. They reserve the room upstairs, Ms. Bree.
Okay. I'll get back with you whatever date is open. We do want to hear from you all again.
Let me say this if I can.
Sure.
From what I've heard today, it seems like there's some that are opposed to the idea. There's some that are in full support of the idea. And then there's a group of people, and I probably fall in that group, to be honest with you, that don't have all the information. I think there's some misinformation about taxes. There's some misinformation about what does rezoning really mean and how does it affect individual property owners? And, you know, hearing from the PAC, they're correct. They had workshops, they had meetings, I went to a couple of them. The question is, is that enough? Obviously, the answer today is, no, it's not enough. So I was actually going to propose a meeting like you just described. I think that people will have more information and then they base a better opinion of a project. Because you're going to find some people that are going to hear an explanation about the rezoning and how it affects them or may not affect them, and some of those people are going to be okay with it. You know, I'm kind of saddened to the fact that everyone in this community wants the community to be better. I think that that's an easy statement to make. We're all trying to figure out, how can we make Port St. Joe better? The whole city of Port St. Joe. You know, we've talked about dividing the city and railroad tracks and not dividing the city. And I think we're making huge improvements in that area. So we, as a city, have to figure out what's best for the entire city of Port St. Joe. And dialogue and explanation and information is critical to do that. So until we understand each other's side of an issue, we really don't understand the details of why someone either opposes a project or doesn't oppose. So I think it's a great idea for Monday evening to try and get together and just sit down and go over, how does it actually affect you? Because I think there's some information that needs to be discussed. And I think at that point, we can then regroup and figure out. I have said all along, I am in support of working to make MLK corridor better. Is this proposal the best and perfect plan? I don't know. But right now, it's the only plan. And I have, I have close friends that own property on MLK, and I'm not even sure where they stand in this because we usually don't talk about, you know, the politics and all that. But I'm going to find out because I think it's important that we hear from everyone.
Very important.
If the letter that went out had the response that no one replied, then we probably need to do a little bit more and hear from people. We may find out that everyone but just a small, small group is in support of it, or we may find out that we got to make some changes. I don't know. So I think meeting, call it a workshop, call it a city hall meeting, or whatever you want to call it, that I would, I would plan to attend.
Yes. Because several people, I want to say this, they did not, and they come up today, did not get the letters. They did not get it. And the ones that I talked to you in the months that we have been meeting, said they didn't understand, and that's why they did not reply because it indicated, interpreted, and their interpretation was, if you in favor of it or if you want to change, you reply to the city, and that's why you did not get any reply from all those letters. But we need the meeting. We need the meeting to get some understanding, some clarification, because a lot of false information has gone out, and those people want to speak and want to be here. We need to get all this information before August 6th so we can enter into August 6th with a fair conscience that this is what they want to do or this is not what they want to do. I think I heard somebody over here call my name before. I thought it was something else about to be. But I will get with the staff, and I hope this can be arranged for on July the 27th, next Monday at six o'clock, because a lot of people can't come at 12.
Thank you. And Jim, could we see if our city planner, Mr. Greer, could be here to explain some of these things for us?
I would try.
Either that meeting or the one in August.
I guess the first thing we need to decide, is this going to be a meeting that you're going to be in attendance, or is this going to be a city commission meeting? Would be the first thing we need to decide.
It sounds like.
I think it's, I mean, it won't be a commission meeting, but unless.
It sounds like it's shaped up to be a workshop, is what it sounds like.
That's what it sounds like to me.
Either that or a town hall meeting, either one.
So if you want to call it a workshop, if you want to call them a meeting.
I'm not opposed to workshop.
Okay with that?
I'd like to hear from a representative of the PAC group because I think it's critical that we have both sides willing to talk about pros and cons and listen to each other. And I think that that's, that's where we need to be. We need to somehow turn this into a project that everyone is excited about. And I think we can do that.
As the president of the PAC, we're open for all forms. That's one of the reasons why we had the meetings, that it was open to all the communities, cities, not just only North Port St. Joe, but all citizens. Now, when they came, let's say we had forty, an average of forty at every meeting. We took up names based upon what the mayor said last conference. The names that we turned into, twenty-seven names we turned into today are the people who own property on the corridor of Martin Luther King. They turned in letters, and Charlotte Hazle's letter, I asked that you look at them. I'm not opposed to any of them, any of them at all. But the fact is that, you know, what are we doing? We're trying to what? Revitalize our community. It's not about taking something from anybody, and that need to be understood. Yes, we can have a public meeting, but it need to be understood that guess what? We are trying to better our community. And it's not a one-man show. It's not about myself and two other people or three other people because they own property. It's about revitalizing a neighborhood that's been blighted for years. And how do you do it if you don't what? Rezone and restructure. So, yeah, we be open to another meeting, but we've had those meetings based upon what was required of us by the city and the county. And we turned those meetings in, we got the list of people that showed up. And so, you know, we've been meeting. But at the same time, we done what was required of us, we even, when I did exactly what the mayor said to do when we was at the last conference. We collected signatures from people who lived in the process on that corridor. We had twenty-seven names turned in, there was a few more that they said they were sending in letters. But we have those lists. We have names already in place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion from the public? Right up there, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
They said they got twenty-seven names. I'm on 202 M O G. I haven't had a letter, I haven't seen nothing. That's why, that's what a whole lot of us trying to figure out. You going down, finding certain people to sign this paper. Get the ones that stayed up. Everybody know me. If you don't know me, you know I still have new G. Everybody know this man and him. Don't act like you don't. So you ain't come to me. And as a matter of fact, if you want to do something, y'all tore our park down, our historic park, why don't you build stuff on that side of the road? Don't bring it down through Main Street. You ain't got no business coming over there. There go a whole big old field y'all got, do whatever you want, ready for the railroad company to walk. You ain't thought about doing nothing there. But you want to come down Martha's Canyon? You're still missing the point. People do not want to change their residential area. That, that's the point. That's the bigger argument. Ain't no talking about no PAC. PAC? What do they own there? They don't own nothing. They, they just want to take. You ain't got no business working back in Martha's Canyon, people done living for years. You got a big old hole over the field right there. Y'all tore out our baseball park, softball field, the railroad road through there, ain't did nothing to it. Why don't you do all that there? Why don't you come over there and start talking about doing something over there? Don't come over and bothering us, man. And y'all talking about it, me, yeah, we need it. Yeah, because a lot of people don't understand. I came all the way across, I took a day off work, because I ain't even heard nothing. I live across the stone. Yeah, I want to come back, but how? How can I come back? You should make me understand it. I can't redo my house. All these people talking about the PAC, PAC, PAC. Ain't nobody thinking about no PAC, because PAC ain't doing nothing for us. Now Arthur Harris, Sherry Sherray, Jasmine Thomas, Shania, Amante, or J, or J, or Javonte. Ain't nobody doing nothing for me or my family. I got to do it on my own. So I don't want to hear y'all talking about a PAC. Yeah, PAC ain't got nothing to do with us, because PAC ain't come to me saying nothing. You know it, you ain't came. You know, you know, ain't nobody came to me. Ain't nobody came to me and told me nothing. I ain't seen no letter, where the letter at? Show me petition where everybody on the road. I haven't seen it yet. Keep it real, one hundred.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Cheryl Steinorf. I'm a member of the PAC and the notorious PAC, I guess. But anyway, I just want to say that consensus building is hard. And you guys have had that for a year and a half with the sports complex on 10th Street. It's hard to get everybody on board going in the same direction, especially when you have people who are so invested in the history of the community that they come from. And my only qualification for being on the PAC is that I come from a small mill town in the state of Washington that suffered the mill pulling out and the loss of jobs and what happens to a community when they lose that. And I just, my hope on being on the PAC was to bring all of the things that people still want on the north side and want to invest in, to keep their dollars there and invest in their own community. And I also know that, serving on a city council for years, that when you get to the end of a process, and the process seems like it's going to be a really great thing, there are people that come in at the end and want to get involved, and sometimes that turns it around to a negative thing. So I get that, and my hope is that anyone who feels they're negatively impacted would feel like the PAC is there to listen to those concerns and to help them work through that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. I think we go to you, Commissioner Langston.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming up. I'd like to say this. I had to help myself too. And I would give anything, everything I did, I worked hard for. I got kids too. And I got family that live in those parts of the town. But I also know that sometimes it takes change to improve the community. Now, I would like, I'd love to have a meeting to see what everybody had to say because I think it's important for us to listen to our neighbors. And hopefully, we'll come to an agreement and move forward. If not, we'll do whatever we have to do to make improvements to our community. I grew up in an area where, when I walked down ML, well, I couldn't walk, first of all, I couldn't walk down MLK. Secondly, I had things to do, game rooms, things like that, a grocery store, gas station. So why can't we see that in the future? And then I want to say this too about taxes. Of course, your taxes going to go up if your property value goes up. You want to get, you want your property value to go up and your property, and your property taxes stay the same? You want things to stay the same like it's been for twenty, twenty-something years when we sit around on the porch saying, I wish I had something to do? You want your kids to just keep, just, let's do something for our community that's good? But I want to do it together, whatever it takes, you know, for the entire Port St. Joe because this doesn't only help North Port St. Joe. This helps the taxes that comes to the city. It helps improve a lot of things for our kids and everything else, if you look at it. So let's just try to work together. We'll have this meeting, let's just come together and get the information out to people, the right information, not misinformation, the right information to people, and let's move forward with this.
Commissioner Horry.
I'd just say, ask Jim if you try to get ready to come and present the plan so everybody's on the same page and the facts presented.
Commissioner.
I don't have anything extra to say. I would like to acknowledge Sarah Hoffman is in the audience, my daughter. I don't know if I'm supposed to say that or not, but if I'm not supposed to say it, I'll apologize now.
They do it in telepathy the whole time.
I think, I've heard a lot of interesting information today, and what you just said, what you said before about information. Information is key. I think that there's people passing misinformation about this. We've been working, the city, actually not, I won't say that, the downtown redevelopment agency started working with the PAC group about two, well, four years ago. About two years ago, got brought before the city to amend our master plan to include it in there. Since that time, there's been multiple opportunities for meetings. I just. I just, it's frustrating when you get to the end of what you think is a great thing and then people start coming out. I think there is a lot of personal resentment amongst some folks and you don't have to be the biggest fan of the people running the show, but it has to be a good show. And if it's a good show, I'll support it. I think that the idea is sound, it's worked in other communities, there's no reason why it can't work for us. I just don't like seeing the negative surrounding it and I think we can solve that by putting out the right information. And this workshop is a great idea and maybe it's been a long time coming. So thank you all for supporting that. And that is all I have and I'll accept the motion. So the meeting is adjourned.